About anything, should we ask before or after? In your opinion, on today's day.
Um, after.
That makes sense because every question may be answered.
During the meeting.
During the meeting. Now, stop by. I noticed to think back.
Well, there'll be a closed session today, Mark, because that might be.
Yep, there's a big washout on the south, so I guess it'll be really good. They're available in the showcase.
Yeah.
It is especially good. They're like, like eighty, let's go.
Uh, it's very, very.
Yeah.
Kind of, you know, the national brand.
Most of the year, well, yeah.
Yes. Oh, I don't wear it funny. Yeah, look funny. Yeah, yeah, that's expecting them. It's kind of like, but that, but that's what I'm saying. So, it's, it's, uh, it's a washout. I'm just worried that that rose to the end, that's fine.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah. But everything else is, so, well, everyone, everyone else, I mean, it looks good, so.
A short meeting then if we don't close session. I know Karen's like, oh, I know.
You say we're having a short meeting? I could state it then.
Um, no, you need to be.
I have my computer. It's gonna be ten fifteen minutes later.
Yeah, starting. Let's see, it's, uh, it's an area into about like four, which is saying it's one nation. Uh, it's full with energy and it's just real.
Okay, this morning.
Good morning.
Thing we'll do is note that we do have a Gorman, but Kurt Cupka is not here. He'll be here. A little bit late, so we'll note that for the record when he comes in, whatever time that is.
During the funeral. I guess, well, yeah.
I think he's busy working him. He just got, got out late, so. First thing we'll do is prove the agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove the agenda. Um, any additions or corrections? If not, whoa. If all of you ever say aye. What's your carries? Public comments?
I'll start. So first off, I want to thank you guys for all the work you've been doing for the last six months. It's been more than what you thought it could be. Yeah, thank you. Second thing is, I want to make a clarification on something that was in the newspaper about Garrison Rieger's Joan, who shot Kathy Holland, Tammy Wise, and other departments, one of those would be Bob, one of those would be Libby, um, there's more, that were let go. So the clarification is Garrison's wife now were school time before she was part-time. Because this looks really bad, like you guys just came in here and just threw everybody off. Joanne Hushak has a new office. Kathy Holland is now employed by Julio Torito as a last word, which is who really wanted her and who really should have been paying because the cities have the most benefit from economic development. Um, Tammy is flowing and Bob has already been working for another company for a long time. And Libby has been reassigned. So I'm just making a clarification on this because this looked, this made you guys look really bad, but in reality, none of these people are very moral way, at least people. So maybe Garrison. And in the meantime, we've also hired new law enforcement, which with terrorism and the growing violence and unrest in this country, which we were addressing one year ago already, that's probably going to be unfortunately a big necessity to put our money into law enforcement and to utilize that building for the growing need of law enforcement. It's sad, but we can create the mess in the country or in the state of Iowa, so we just have to go through it. My second thing would be a compliment to Ben who's out there working on my corner on my road where there's been multiple accidents for the last numerous years. I don't know, I mean, I've lived there for over thirty years, I guess thirty-five already, and been there forever, so, since nineteen sixty. So, um, he's taken the quarterback, um, really, I was a little, I was a little uneasy because he had not even talked to me about him doing all this digging out there. And my comment to Ben would be, when you've got weed guys out there, if Ben would have them also mow off the wild carrot, it seemed like they're kind of trying to leave the wild carrot there because it's so beautiful, but it's a noxious weed and nothing can eat it and it is, it caused allergies and a great number of people had also animals, especially dogs. So my comment would be instead of leaving those stand there because they look pretty right now, they're not going to be very pretty in another two weeks. So that'd be my comment on the weed, but I'm really glad he's working on that corner. Not only that, I've had neighbors stop in and tell me and call me and tell me that they're really glad that the county's working on that dangerous, dangerous corner before E forty-three closes. So, I guess everything else I can add again, those were our questions.
Just as a clarification, Libby is still part-time.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. But she's still here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, let's make it.
Yeah, um, so I just want to share some history, fill in some blanks and just use the information as you will in considering future decisions. I happen to have some, I've been listening with interest to conversations about mental health and so happens I'm not her history with a mental health clinic in Tame County. So I was working at Career Development Center. My director at the time was on the board of the mental health clinic of Tame County. And when she wanted to get off, she asked if I would join, so I was on the board. And then I took over the role as chair in what seemed to be a quiet time. And suddenly, as you know how those things go, could make payroll, we were having a difficult time finding a nurse to help the psychiatric care. We're about to lose our psychiatrist, it was a hard time. And it was just a really difficult period. And for a county the size of Tame County to have a mental health clinic was a heavy load then, and of course, things have only gotten worse. So what are we going to do? We called in Tom Echus from Blackout County to see if we could come down and assess our situation. I happen to know Tom Echus, another deputy sheriff.
Yeah.
It's been so good. Um, and he looked over the situation and we found out we had some pretty serious issues with documentation and that leads to issues with bill and Medicaid. I mean, it could have been considered a fraud situation. And for anybody who is listening, I never questioned the sincerity of the people who were at the clinic. I know they were doing their best, but the financial side of it just was not working out. So Tom Echus, we asked if he would be interested from Blackout County to take over our clinic, be director, who is not interested. How was she county at the time was in even worse shape than we were. So we went towards, um, Marshalltown and Center Associates and Mike Bergman, who happened, Mike Bergman, who happened to be the executive director at the time. I really have this day why he decided that he. So, and so that's, that's one thing about history, how they got here and the fact that they were dedicated to continue to provide services. My friend now retired and first of all, Dan goes, has taken over. Um, they did not close their doors suddenly and one day they just went there. They had had building issues since last year, they knew it. They had called in a structural engineer, they were keeping an eye on it. Problems were growing faster than they might have anticipated, the structure was separated from the foundation. Um, and you know, even the clinic clinicians could come in and say, oh, that was today than it was before. So they called the structural engineer in again. And the final determination was made, this is just not safe. And if it's not safe, it's just not safe, you gotta get people out. So within three weeks, they did do at least two text lap, blast out to their clients. They sent letters out, there were signs posted in the building and then they shut down. So it absolutely was a known situation. Um, I also would like, I don't know, Mark, maybe you can explain this and maybe everybody knows it, but the difference between services from Prairie Ridge Center Associates really is not comparing apples to apples. Are, are you aware of that? I mean, Prairie Ridge started with the two C substance abuse, co-occurring mental health issues, um, addiction. Uh, they have some residential services located in Mason City. Center Associates is primarily mental health, and they have started, which I just think is phenomenal, a urgent care service so that you don't, if you fall, you can get services today. You can be seen today. Um, and that also, of course, that's not going to be here. I mean, it's just not going to come down to our small counties, but to know that it is available at Marshalltown. Uh, and they worked with Impact in Marshalltown, YSS, CAPS, Prairie Ridge, Prairie Ridge Ridge South and family mental, or family medicine doctors. So that's a unique service that they have. So I guess I'm just, I'm saying, please, when you consider talking about services to, uh, we may need them sometime in the future. I mean, you, you've made the comment that Prairie Ridge will see how it works out. Well, consider that Center Associates has been here and they offered a very detailed proposal because they know what it's like to work with our clients and they know the financial, what's needed to stay here. Otherwise, if the business end doesn't work out, you can't have the clinic's open. So I just ask you to consider that, um, and to have a congenial tone in conversation with them and not make it, it has sounded to me as if it was somewhat antagonistic. I don't know, but maybe work on making it more of a congenial tone. And finally, I, I would like to say, um, what did it mean when you said, Mr. Dolan, that you know proprietary factors about Center Associates that gives you cause? I mean, either you know something and I would want to know it if I use their services. That's just a very concerning thing to say about a business than then not give details. That it kind of leaves something strange out there for people to ponder.
Yeah, I said it would give me pause, not cause.
No, I, that's why I said pause, but, but it's just a mystery then with the proprietary factors on it.
Well, it's information that I don't know that they want. It's, it's a business, it's related to business. And so if we were going to invest money in it, that would give me some, if, if I was going to invest money in it, then I would disclose it. If we were going to, as a board, go with their proposal, which was, I think, around a hundred thousand dollars. If, just a question back to you, if, if you were sitting up here and.
Well, no, it, it, what you know, but the point is you made it public. You just, you made it.
I have a question for you though, if you would answer, if you were sitting up here and you have somebody from the public alert you, actually alerted our auditors, our deputy auditor, um, that Center Associates was closing their doors without them reaching out to the county ahead of time, would that give you pause?
Um, well then, my question would be, how many of you have?
I want you to answer my question now. Would that give you pause?
Do you have an agreement with Center Associates?
Out there, the community mental health center providing the most services for the longest period of time that you secured back in the day, wouldn't that give you pause? That they're, they are a community partner that we rely on, that those services aren't going to be available anymore? Wouldn't you want some kind of a notice?
I, you don't have an agreement, I, I don't, no, I, I don't, I, I don't see either way that, that is necessary.
So it's not necessary to let the people that are overseeing mental health care in your county, it's not important that they would notify?
You know what? I'm not doing this with you. Because this is what you like to do and I'm not doing this with you.
Well, answer the question.
No, I'm not doing this.
Okay, your comments are, are, got the period of, anybody else?
Well, I do want to ask, um, the settlement agreement with Salt Creek, if there isn't any statement about how the funds are to be used and, and that might be generally how it's done, but it isn't in the statement and that's fine, but do you as a board have plans for the one point two million dollars?
That's going to go into our general plan.
Okay.
Anybody else? For public comment, Dave, Dave Sires, good to see you. Okay, we'll close public comments. Is anyone here? Are, are we at minutes?
Minutes, yes.
Uh, discussing approved seven twenty, twenty-five, regular minutes.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oops, let's shake yours, that way.
Mark, you're happy.
All right, it's there. So we've been, last week at least, pretty well. Um, Granny, um, so have, have handled that service. We're working that today and get that box, uh, tomorrow, if that opened up. Shut up. Um, working on, version H, um, the brand, to get that, well, you know, this week. Got, um, some washouts and whatnot, uh, the rain, the flooding that we've had. Yeah, so long, one point or P out of there by, yeah, most of them. The V eighteen, Max Chelsea is pretty old, um, over the road, so once those kind of drop down, we'll be kind of focusing our trucks and effort on, on those spots to get those back going up. Um, we've been played through dust controls, second application, uh, should take place this week. Uh, and then had a pre-construction meeting for the E forty-three or the Panda, uh, bridge replacement. And that one's tend to, tend to be really going to start, uh, we did the eighteen. And then we're best, I don't know, I guess, um, have not, anything back, but I'm just anticipating I'm starting sometime after Labor Day, so.
West East of Church?
That's the one east, yeah, the, the bridge rather, East Church, so, um, yeah. So that's all I've, I've got, uh, for today, so.
What's the completion date for E forty-three? What's their tentative? I know that's an unknown exact number, but.
We, we talked to last Wednesday. It was, uh, October, mid-October, here or there, two months, so.
Okay, and then is there certain routes that most people will go that you're gonna rock and stuff like that?
So the routes, the detour route is K I N going north to two seventieth street, um, and then over. And then they'll be down to highway sixty, you know, down to highway sixty-three, so.
And then dust controls, stuff too, on people that live around there?
Yeah, so.
Otherwise continued washouts, I know, I know that, but if there's no wind here for P A, they'll be getting up there. There's so much only traffic just because it's just such big washouts. I know it's been busy and lots of rain, but if we get a dry spell here, let's get hit monkey.
Yeah. Wait for this.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, they will fire us.
Having a complaint that where, uh, two ninetieth and T forty-seven meet, they're, they're holding all kinds of rock under there.
Yeah.
In the, where the concrete or the asphalt dirt meets the gravel with cluster nut.
Okay.
Yeah. Loads. I've got some others, it's all, even, yeah. All right, the one on K I N, I guess, K I N, K I N, it's good.
Yeah.
Did that ditch?
Yep. Yes. Yeah. The campaign. I, good. Just waiting back. I got offered the position to the Genzo operator, um, just waiting back for the protest. I guess that's clear, we'll, I'll, that's the order, and I hope we'll get information this week and then we can, we're gonna go.
What's tentative start date?
Two weeks after.
Okay.
You know, get, get everything approved, so.
That's good, thanks.
Thanks.
You looking for a job?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah, you experienced? Uh-huh. You have any experience?
No.
Anything you do, don't you?
No, Cheryl's kicking you out, I don't think, Adam.
Go find somebody to do it, right?
Yeah, cancer over here, go get a job.
All right, uh, discussion possible action to mail letters to county land renters terminating agreements.
So that's something I put on there, it was a one-year agreement, since we missed the last cut out to send those letters out, so if your permission also, they were in terminate, so we can get that bidding tackled.
Okay. Sorry.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, Mr. Carries.
What's that deadline, fifteen?
What's the time first we have to?
Uh, yeah, they, they have to make this five.
So we send the letter and then new bits come in?
Yeah, they may not go within, they're going to get new bit for everything.
Yeah.
Later on.
I know it's already been approved, but three letters will be called.
Just two.
Just two.
Just two, we have a stock and a pasture.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just take a lit, I don't have a maid on yet.
Next is discussion possible action to approve, uh, the US chairman signed notice of withdrawal. Discussion possible action to approve the, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so this is the termination of the mental health region. It was July, July first, we went to behavioral health districts, however, this will sunset at some time, but we had entered into a twenty-eight year agreement, um, with them back in the twenty thirteen range. So the notice just basically, this was resolution, that, well.
How was it a resolution?
Yeah. Matters much format wise on our agenda doesn't say resolution, but I think people, we know it will agree, so we'll just approve it as a resolution, that, if you.
Do you want to amend it with a resolution number then?
Right. Yeah.
What would that number be, Karen?
It's gonna be eight four twenty twenty-five A.
Like that motion that we amended to resolution eight four twenty twenty-five A, do you want it? Or do not need to do that?
Of the seconded?
Yeah, and then hold.
Just for record keeping.
Yeah.
Did you second it?
Definitely did. Be more in splash.
We're voting on the event, but all those in favor say aye.
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 What's your carries? So then we'll need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'm gonna demotion. You second?
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? They'll continue to take bills until I think the end, well, they're pretty much done taking, taking the bills. They still have, I think, three million dollars left sitting there. We had argued to try to get the money back because at the beginning of the start, I mean, like, this, this, uh, the twenty D agreement specifically stated that if it ever was dissolved, that that money, the original money would go back to the accounts and that it happened, so the state's, uh, clawing it all back, so. As I've said, that money's already been cycled through, you know, whatever money's been there for the last year and a half. It's come from the state, so there's, there were no attorneys that wanted to take that off. It was tried. All right, roll call.
Okay, sure.
Aye.
What then?
Aye.
Dolan?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Comer?
Aye.
Okay, what the passes? Go down to. Discussion possible actions to approve letter of representation with Eric Updrew for Hopkins and Utnor. I sent out, uh, the letter. They're gonna question on that rate, and it's gonna be two fifty per hour because we get the heartland risk rate.
Could be different, I know with college it's different, it's lower, so I don't know if we want to prove it or wait.
Potentially, uh, we go into, uh, I had asked for his availabilities, was it available today? Or he didn't get back to me on the closed session. Uh, we just put it on the agenda on Friday, just in case he was available, so, uh, there's nothing pressing there, but, uh, think that if we could, uh, we can approve it and we can make that contingent on the hourly rate. If it's for two fifty an hour, we could say two fifty, but we definitely have to, you know, trip into your, more or less. So we need a motion to enter into the contract.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion seconded, we're trying to work with, uh, get legal allies up so, uh, to, uh, so that we don't end, end up in litigation with them and Eric has done some, had sent it, had their some information. Other things, other projects that he's worked on with development agreements. And so think that he would lead this in the right direction anyway and be able to answer our questions, so. Okay, then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Real quick before that, the only discussion would be, does it say for supervisors only? Is that, do we need to be clear on that with our motion that it's for the supervisors on this specific thing? Or is it okay to leave it general? Just a question. So we have one adjustment, we have zoning administrator, I don't know if we need to explain any or if it's okay to be open ended, just.
Um, I think we could leave it open ended right now.
Okay.
For the litigation, but until it's dropped, they have, they're on the journey. We can revisit that adjustment if we need to.
Okay.
Think that he would be available to some administrators as well.
Mm-hmm, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Brent doesn't have time to do it.
Yes.
It is about five minutes behind, so. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, Mr. Carries. Scratch the closed session. There was an actor. This supervisor updates by district.
Uh, District One. Six judicial did have their annual, uh, meeting. And it was just talked about the, the state, we're gonna handle the, the situation that they're gonna be taking over. And then the Board of Health. Stacy, I believe it's Stacy, uh, Copin was, has been, is officially there now as the director, so I'm pretty happy or pretty excited about her situation. We didn't do it, didn't have a meeting for the age of Tame County, so that would be pretty much it for me.
Okay. Um, from District Three, so the I Workforce Development Board that I'm on, so I mentioned in the past that our South Central Board, um, is losing federal funding to where we need to merge with another, uh, board. And so exploration was approved, we did exploring and it was found that Mississippi Valley would like to join with us. We're also meeting on the East Board as well, they, they, um, so we, we definitely would like to merge with Mississippi Valley. Uh, they have workforce development areas in Davenport.
Uh, they have workforce development areas in Davenport and Burlington. Um, and it's pretty much our only option, either we join another board or we let the state take it over, and so. That's a, this decision from the board, if Northeast also wants to join, we would get half of the state funding, which would be good, we'd be like a little powerhouse of kind of our. I'd say rural more areas, like Lynn County didn't want to join with us because they didn't want to lose power, you know, they didn't want a, a bunch of us small ones to come in, they made that clear. Um. That's kind of where we're at, so we're gonna ask the state, get the approval from them. Then we have to do a twenty eight E, update policies, um, there's gonna be twenty two counties with the two together. So it's gonna be July first of twenty twenty six would be the official. Date for that, but we would continue to operate until then, um, using the funds that we have, so. Kind of just, it's gonna be a long transition anytime that you do that, and obviously if Northeast decides to come too, um, they'll be in there as well, so no action that I need from you guys, you guys appointed me that I could. Go ahead and approve that, so, um, that's where we're going on that. Uh, my D cap meeting with Johnson, Fauci and Tama, we meet this Thursday, um, so I'll have some updates after that meeting. Um, Heartland Risk Tool, uh, I think it was spent out to all you guys at the fall seminar in September eleventh. It's nice for us that the running center is so nice and close, so I think all employees are invited, so there's gonna be some good topic, there's some. Changes, um, with the IPID, so I think everybody was emailed that, so at least we can get trained on that and figure out next steps with some of the new things that were voted on with legislation. Um, economic development, um, so, uh, met with Institute for Decision Making on Economic Development, so. They're at the University of Northern Iowa, um, just to learn more about economic development, how we can advance that in Hema County. So just want to make sure we learn and, and so David is gonna be helping with that as well, since he has had economic development. Um, we're gonna go visit, uh, Grundy Butler Economic Development. And I guess eighteen coming next, so sounds like they have a really good facility, they got a industrial park that they did from the ground up on the ground, so. Really neat opportunity and, and it's a combined kind of a county thing, so, so yeah, we're gonna go check that out. This team, once we do that, and then that Institute for Decision Making, um, in the future will likely have. Parts, business leaders, cities, county, whoever. Join, uh, this Institute for Decision Making, you and I, they'll come and, or they'll kind of train us on what is that kind of development, what others doing? What, what looks, what does it look like we'd be doing instead, so, um. So yeah, I think it's some good opportunities that we'll continue to work with. Otherwise, um. Yeah, so I already mentioned the washout, so that's kind of everywhere. For turbines, I saw there's two cranes now, um, with the Salt Creek wind, so I looked at it yesterday and, um, there is two of them that are being erected, they're half already ready and look like, to me, it looks like. All the components are laying, they're ready, the blades and everything, so I would assume that they get those up and. Six hundred thousand from the settlement, I would think, coming in the near future now. And then, like, components are sitting there in the, the big grade, so, um, so that's one update on, on that. Let me know if there's, you know, issues in product area of roads and I can let them, the wind company know as I'll take care of them. Um, or if there's others, I'll talk to Ben, so. I think that's it.
Okay. Update from Central Iowa Detention, I attended this last meeting. I'm trying to get some, you. Committee over from David. For now, I'm still the alternate, but I'm attending and a re- regular voting member for now, because he's pretty loaded down with other stuff. And I'll probably just take that over moving forward. Um, they had. There's a lawsuit going on between Hardin County and Central Iowa Detention. And. There's been a couple of settlement offers back and forth. And we'll see where that goes, uh, really what they're trying to do, they're trying to define who is actually a voting member, because there was some paperwork that was missed in twenty eighteen. And it all kind of goes back to, uh, the very beginning of it. There were, um, the original ten and that would, we would have been included in that, now there's thirty five counties. And at one time they were being, waiting to go defunct before they opened it up for everybody, everybody, the people who were coming in at that time had to pay a one time fee to get in. Now nobody has to pay a fee to get in because it's a, the first of five years, so. Lot of neighbor in that, so we haven't had charged anybody to get in, and so what they want to do is go back and. And say that the original people, their money is still there because it's a, I mean, it's a fifteen million dollar organization, it's huge. That's half of our county, but, you know, that's more than half of our county budget. Anyway, so, um, they're trying to protect, protect those interests, we haven't really determined what the, um. The fallout is, the new twenty eight new agreement, however, those is the, if it ever is dissolved and the funds go back to the county, it goes by how many. Dollars you've invested within the last two years with, by putting, you know, your kids, your kids in there. Um, how much, how much you're utilizing it over the last two years prior to it going to fund, that that come back, but it's a strong organization, I can't imagine it going under at this point. Um, so that's what's going on at Central Iowa Detention. Um. We haven't had. We didn't have any babies. Didn't have any kids, please didn't get. So that's always a good thing. Um, next thing. On the negotiations, we wrapped up, um, with next era of those negotiations. Those details are all out, we had, um. Had met with him and then on, I think, late last week, uh. Was that, or I mean, uh, Tuesday, got an email from Haley and Rec, and, uh, Mike Rec. Saying that some of the things that were coming up that needed to be filed, needed to have a response, and so. Reached out to both sides and, uh, the. The recommendation from Haley and Mike was to file a motion to stay, um, so that everything would just kind of pause on the litigation. Until after we, all of the paperwork was done for the settlement agreement, then it's basically everybody was good to. Try to go with the thing. And so we waited for that. Um, we were assured that, uh, next era was going to file a motion to dismiss on Friday, that, that. That was, uh, that it was done anyway, and I hadn't heard anything back from Mike and Haley over the weekend, so I assumed that that has happened, so. Um, there was a question mark as to, uh, when we would. Send a letter to the Board of Adjustment asking them to drop that, um, the, the motion for rescission of the cup. And, uh, I just said, there's no timeline on it, so we might as well just do it now, when it's already approved, so we'll head and. Send it just to kind of get things in order so that when the, the first one is. Raised that we would be able to, um. That we've done all the things that we said we would do, and they've done all the things that they said they would do, that's so that we can receive our first cash payment. So that's where. That is, we have had, uh, so, uh, Salt Creek Two, uh, where that's at, they had put in a judicial use permit application, uh, that. We have a moratorium on, um, trying to figure out a way to not get sued in there. And, uh, Laura had met with them last, there's, it was Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday, they go over there. Um. They call the cup and, uh. Where there might be issues with, with that anyway, and, uh, David and I have, um, talked with them as well. To see what. They would need an addition to whatever the, uh, current ordinance says, and, um. So trying to sort out all the details, I think that. Uh, Updraf would be able to lead us through that, Eric. And what else? Mental health, uh, so now we're not going to Black Hawk for any of our mental health stuff is, um. Like we said earlier. Most of our mental health needs are in the south side of the county, and so it makes more sense to go to Marshalltown, that was. Um, shifted in the behavioral health district change. Um, as far as comparing Sutusi with, um, Center Associates. Um, Center Associates used to be the Community Mental Health Center. For the region, they're. Sutusi has, or not Sutusi, I'm sorry, it's, uh, Very Ridge, Very Ridge has that designation now, Very Ridge integrated. A big area, and they, uh, Sutusi went from having like twelve employees, and so now Very Ridge has like three hundred employees, I mean, it's a huge, huge outfit, so there's a lot of different services. They now have the designation after July first, so they are the Community Mental Health Center for the entire region. And so they are, they are offering those services. And, uh, we're not going to shut Center Associates out if they want to do services in Dana County, but they withdrew, uh, the services. Um, so let's start with the two C, uh, and. As was stated earlier, Berlin had said that Impact is under Center Associates, which is not, it's under Y S S. And then Marshall County, who is also struggling right now, uh, agencies, smaller agencies with mental health are going to be struggling under this new system. Unless we get better reimbursement rates through medical. And I stand by the fact, I think that they should have given us. Uh, they provide, they were the premier, um, and only, one of the only, uh, Community Mental Health Center providers in our county. But had lots of people under caseloads that they were seeing every day, I met with their, um. With their CEO, Karen was with us, uh, when we met. And met with the, um, the director from Very Ridge, met with them both last week, again with Casey, um, on Friday, to see what the. County are going to be withdrawing, just so that the gap is filled before. Just as a common courtesy, there was no agreement, no mandate to do that, but I think certainly there was an expectation. Okay. As far as other, other services, I'm working with Casey, the new, the new mental health, our new, uh, Public Health. CEO that you were talking about Stacy Copin there. Um, is interested in having those discussions about mental health now. So we'll meet with her sometime this week, probably. To discuss, so. I think that's pretty much it. On the mental.
Uh, District Five. The landfill, uh, I was on vacation, didn't get a go at that meeting, but going through all the minutes and stuff and talking with them after I got back, that. Fences is still kind of on hold, he's getting prices and stuff, but, uh, everything else, I'll, especially if you're running a self machine, so. Um. Lot of road reports and stuff with all this weather, um, just been working with Ben, trying to get through a lot of that stuff, trying to get the stuff addressed. Lot of calls, a lot of emails, a lot of texts. On my end, um, I don't know, my. District's kind of more hilly than everybody else's, so I got a lot of washing, you can imagine. Uh, people flooding down Chelsea, roads, roads are closed, uh, B eighteen's closed. Um. There are people driving through, but I would just. Be cautious and go slow, don't, don't flash everybody's house. Um. That was always a big thing, I, I grew up in town, so I know what it's like. Uh, other than that, that's about all I have this week, uh, like I said, just mostly addressing everything on the phone and doing that, that way, so. But, um, drove some roads, looked at some stuff. Auto line up.
I'll try and keep mine real short, um. Heather's already covered economic development, looking forward to partnering with her and with other agencies to. Get stuff going here in, in the Dana County. Um. Mark talked about negotiations and actions on Salt Creek. Uh, with LLC, so that was what we'd be called Phase One. Um. And. Thanks for your leadership there, we had some really good. All the discussions. Um, and then moving forward, I know that, uh, Salt Creek Two is concerned and, uh. Again, more negotiations, um. So I was working, I'm still working on prisoners and the federal government taken, or saying they cannot have their Medicaid anymore once they enter a prison or like our jail. Um. And it went all the way up, and I talked with a lady from the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Um, they got. Routed to her because they assumed that they hadn't been paying them the bills, well, we were not talking about federal prisons, we're talking about. The local challenges, so, so she had said she'd help me any way that she could, but, um, that part about her baby wreck, so, um. There was a representative here from Senator Grass's office. Was it, uh, I don't remember what they had once, it couldn't have been Thursday, Friday, I'm gone, so it must have been. Tuesday? Anyway, I spoke with her and she knew that I was going to ask her these questions, um, so she's going to go back and find out where it went wrong. At the federal level, because they deferred it or. Turned it up to Bureau of Prisons when it needed to go to Congress, so, um, still waiting on that, finding it, I don't believe. And it's costing every local jail, county, state, whatever. Lots of money, it's done making them pay the bills. Uh, the people were actually under the, the Medicaid in the first place, so. I'm probably fighting a bigger battle, and I'm glad you're here, Dave, maybe you can go out there too. Um, and then I had talked with Dave at another meeting and, and, uh. And said that, I know that he's an expert on TIPS, I mean, he's gone, talking on the deepest dive ever. And I wanted him to help us out as more, because some comments came up with, what should we do with money from, um. The wind turbines and so forth, moving forward. And tips were mentioned, and, um, I said, well, before we go down that path, I would like for us to talk with. Somebody who actually knows what they're talking about and can, can give us. Some advice on how not to go and what we could do with. Ten percent of that money, then we go back to the state, is that a correct statement?
No, but actually what happens is when you took a district, it's usually the cities that do it. And then the county doesn't get their ten percent, which you do in economic development area, might as well do it in Cedar Falls.
Yeah.
And it really cheats at everyone, because what happens is county doesn't get their ten percent. But not only that, now the state has to back up for the schools. Schools still get almost all of their money, but it's backfilled through the state, so the state has to back up that hard, right? So tomorrow I meet with Pam, she's on the Ways and Means.
Okay.
She's the head clerk there, and I want to ask her all these questions, let's make it down to the end of the day. But, uh. It's gonna be interesting if we can get it so that counties. That's the question, because part of it is just cities.
Yeah, but that you, you have to set up a, a rule improvement then. Uh, somewhere in the county regions, so they do the cash, and then the money from the hip, you know, whatever is ahead, and they use it, they have to use it just in that.
Right, and here was the interesting thing too, um, believe it or not, like. I'm really looking at all this stuff, because this will corrupt as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, of course on YouTube, they had the city of Chicago. And they started to talk about all their tip districts, as long as the tip district touches another tip district, you can ship money if you wanted to the other. So that's what Cedar Falls did. Cedar Falls actually has a sewer line that goes from their south tip district up to their north tip district. And they ran, there's a sewer line there, so they tipped that sewer line all the way so that their two tip districts could be.
Right.
So it's hugely bad, and nobody who's on Ways and Means, the, the, the thing that I've run into is you don't get put on committees. Um, by where you know what's going on. You get like basically, and how long you've been there. So. I'm fighting my way in, and these tip districts just upset me like they do these guys, so that's what I'm working on down there.
Yeah, you can keep us updated, that'd be great, because like Gladbrook, you know, turbines, they did tip it, so we don't, they took it for the roads, fixed the roads, and then, you know, we don't get any money till twenty thirty one from the turbines.
And it's be just within that little tiny area, whatever they've set aside.
Yeah.
And we're paying it, paying it back.
Yeah, we have to pay back, and the legislation changed, so we pay back an extra fifty thousand every year, I think it is. Because it changed, because it's promised money from the turbines that, you know, legislation can change anytime. I talked to Paoshi County, they tipped all their turbines, I mean, Monizuma, Deep River, they have a lot of turbines, they tipped all of them, with some counties do like a certain percent, like let's do ten out of the. Ninety or something, but, yeah, we'd love to hear your, your expertise, I mean, for us, Gladbrook, I, it didn't work all right.
And it has to do with our, uh, income tax too, um, the guy that said he had, uh, had a Ways and Means, he's the police officer. Now, I would have just assumed it had been a banker or somebody who dealt with money and those kinds of things. But it's a police, I, not that I have anything against police officers, good, but I think there's, but I think. But it's a police, I, not that I have anything against police officers, good, but I think there's, but I think there's some people who would be better. Uh, suited to do these different jobs and they just don't get set up that way, so.
But that's why, you know, that's why I'm up today, because I know he's done a, uh, perfectly an effort, um, looking into tips and. I'm concerned with corruption too, I don't want anybody to get money that they don't deserve. And I don't want us to be subsidizing anything that we ought not to. And I will make sure that if whatever decisions we make, they're very well informed. So the public continues to trust what we're doing, uh, to protect our county, so.
No, as it should be.
Then I had I T, um, so we approved the new contract, so we get a faster service, one gig for our main service. Coming into the fiber optic through Orion and we're switching over to them also for our backup. So there, there will be a backup connection and that will be a five hundred meg, uh, which is faster than what we have right now. For our main line, or about what we have for our main line, so, so that would be our failover backup. So there's some things that have to be worked out there for that to happen, and then I've been working with James from, um, Marshalltown. And Evan, who is the mayor of a small town over that away, um, and he's also been a big help. They're providing the service to us for free, uh, they're, they've come up with a lot of good ideas and right now what they're doing is they're finding out where. Every line goes, who is, who owns the service on it? Um, and one of the things they, they've suggested to us is that they, that we would build a new connection. And it would be titled ten dot eight six dot, what, eighty-six is our candidate, ten dot eight six. And then whatever else happened, that way it's a lot easier when things connect to the state, but the state says, hey, you guys are doing something, you're messing up. Our program will say, okay, what's our IP, what's the IP number, if it's not ten dot eighty-six and following, it's not us. Plus, it just makes it so much easier to figure out where things are, so they're going down that path and if we, if we follow it. They'll make a parallel to what we currently have and then they'll move over small portions of it at a time. Uh, but basically what they're doing for us is, is very, very helpful. And so I told them, they said they wanted us to wait for the new IP director before decisions were made on equipment. And I said, no, I'm your ID for IP director right now, we're going to get the equipment you're recommending. After the board looks at it and is satisfied, um, with the cost and its abilities. I don't want something that we will have to piecemeal later put bandage on, it needs to be something that works for us now. And we'll take care of the future without having to replace pieces of equipment. So, um, that's what's going on right now, it's a week by week, uh, challenge. Because they only get to talk to our current, um, Windstream personnel on Tuesdays. But they can talk to them at length on Tuesdays, whereas CSS charges us by the hour, we pay Rick, uh, flat rate for a monthly, so. Uh, Rick's been quite helpful and has been able to give us a lot of information, so. Where it starts, where it goes, where all these wires are, what we can just connect, um, and then. Uh, and they've, they've, uh, found some things that they can fix there too, so. And they're taking pictures of everything, three sixty pictures, so they don't have to physically go back to each of these rooms every time they want to ask a question. They can see the lines, they can see the equipment and like I said, they're diagramming up every line where it goes. So that's a, that's a big project and I'm thankful for their service to us. That's it.
Alrighty. Another thing I just wanted to go back to, uh, that Kurt was mentioning a little bit on the roads. Um, I've had a just a ton, I'm, we've had rain, I, we get that, uh, but I'm. I'm told that this predates all of that, just the philosophy that we have for maintaining roads, uh, shouldn't be addressed and. So I have had a lot of call, I don't know, you can say. An extreme amount of calls or people stopping me, you know, just talking to me and asking me to go. And, uh, look at their road and I've done it, uh, where I've gone out and met with people that looked at the road and some of, uh, that, uh, he's got. You know, the, um, foreman went over and everything was, was taken care of. But I also, I was driving some stuff up to the Gladbrook auction this last week, uh. It took all gravel along the way up there and there's some really bad spots up there where even with just the, my truck and the little trailer. Was. Down the one lane and a lot of areas coming up over hill and so I know they're gonna go out and try to fix those washouts this week when, when it's a little bit dry, but. Um, there's a lot of people that would like to speak out, but don't have the ability to attend our meetings because they're during the day. And so like this. Come back and work and, and, uh, doesn't that, does that have to be anything that's really that, um. We're going to give a lot of answers, but I would like to take feedback and, you know, so that we have that understanding of where people are at all over the county. So I'm really good at this, but it's around there.
I know we've talked, um, and the problem is the cutting. Blade men over the last twenty-three years have just gotten a little worse at cutting, cutting means scraping the dip side. Um, the number of reasons they do that, they're cutting the grass, they want, don't want the grass grow there. And it's all over the county, I don't, we've lost, we've lost four or five of our best, most experienced blade men in the last. Six, seven years, so we got a lot of new guys out there, but even though veterans, consider veterans now. Still have that attitude that we want to cut the grass, you know, and. In the hills, it creates washouts, that it goes, it go down the hill on the road. Um, in the flat areas, the water can't get off, so it's potholes. I mean, it, it causes, it's, they, it's bad on both sets, but it's just, it's two different outcomes. They've been confronted many, many years and they just don't change, um. Now, Mark and I thought it's, maybe we need to talk to Ben and sit down and, and he's, he's fighting uphill battle too. I mean, these guys get their own, um, things in their brains and it's hard to change, um, but. Yeah, I mean, we know this problem, I mean, we know there's a problem out there, you know, and sometimes I get a little disgusted with people complaining after it rains, because we know. Just need to find a way to fix it. Over the years, I tried a little bit with kind of changing rocks and whatever, but I didn't get much help out of the operators either. They wouldn't change their, their ways and, um. Until we find a way, it's our operators, they need to change, or we find a way to take care of that grass on the edge. Yeah, uphill battle, but it definitely needs to be, that ridge, that lip needs to be fixed, I mean, that's. Whether now it's just shave it off in the ditch, which is gonna cause some ditch problems. They don't get the water off the roads, or in the hills, they don't have ditches on top of the hills. They take the, you know, the ditches kind of go away, um, what, dig hills or dig ditches on top of the hill. Um, to get that water off the road, um, that's an option. But again, there, we only have two diggers, three if we took, would take the one off our bridge crew. We got tons of miles of roads to take care of, but at least we'd be fighting it. And that would be taken away from regular di- ditching and all that kind of stuff, but, um. Yeah, I just tell my people that call, I said, well, we understand a hundred percent, you know, and, and. So we know what's gonna happen after every rain, you know, heavy rain, um, and as far as muddy roads is. It's a lot of things, I've said it a hundred times in here already, that's, that's since I've been here, it's. Quality rock is really poor, um, size of the equipment is just hard on gravel roads. It's just terrible, um, there's some other deals in there, it's just tough to take, the roads are getting so wide. That, um, if we go to fix a road, um. It'll take two days to do a mile, a day and a half to do a mile with it from the top. So that rock doesn't, uh, that rock, I mean, goes sixteen to eighteen feet to do any good. So you can't fix, there's some of these roads are twenty-four to twenty-six feet wide. Um, so that's a major problem, those roads are so wide, you should almost have to do two. Stretch, but we don't have time, we don't have the trucks to do that, so, um, it's an uphill battle. I just want to tell everybody out there, live out there, we, we know, I know, I mean, and Kurt's experience too, um, we're not just. Throwing it away, we're, we're trying, we're trying to think of ways to do this, you know, something, what we've done the last forty years is not working anymore. So why not try something to change, so whether it's us get with Ben and put our heads together, or us with Ben and the blade men. And it was just road department and maybe they, you know, but. Yeah, we, we need, we understand the problem out there and, uh.
I, I, when I get a complaint from somebody who never complains, then it's serious, and so the, the comment was made. The people who are doing the roads now. Are doing them the way they ought to have been done and the way they were done well in the past, so there are best practices out there. Maybe we don't have our hands on that, but that's something we need to go down the path of doing, what's the best pa- practice? And then they need to be held to it, I mean, if, I know we've done some training and then after the training's over with, they just do it. The way they wanted to in the first place, and that's, that, we can't do that, I mean, we're expected to do a certain, our jobs a certain way. I would say the same thing for the guys, like, we don't have to be any gals yet, none of that, but for the folks, that's the honest folks. For the folks who are running the equipment, they need to do it correctly, uh, because. He sounded like the first time, um, and that would be the mind headless in the military. What makes you think you got time to do it the second time, can't do it right the first time. Um, but yeah, I think we need to do, I think we need to go down that path and figure out. How do we, how do we prioritize things, how, and how do we train the folks and then hold them to that? Uh, and I don't want to go down the path of having, you know, a farmer on every road, okay, you're the one, if they don't do it right, call us. So I guess they, they're calling Mark, I'm telling them to call Mark anyway, just, I'll take mine off, but, uh, but yeah. Best practices, old people speak to the fire, uh, we're spending a lot of money. And we need to spend it frequently.
Yeah, that's why we bought that groomer, we got, we have a thirteen foot groomer, eleven foot groomer, I'll take thirteen foot, um. And they're relatively cheap for their, for their size of them, what kind of equipment is, um. You can't cut with a groomer. We need to get them equipment, that, that groomer we bought has not touched the road, we've had it for a year and a half because. Quote unquote, we have nothing to pull with it, well, um, Ben's kind of been dragging his feet on that, but things should have been used, um. From what, where I talked to a couple, a couple other counties, they buy one, they buy two, I mean, that's how. Yeah, that's how happy they are with them, um, so we need to get those on the road, um. Because when they cut that like that, they put that pressure on, that also breaks the rock up a little faster. Um, and if we run those groomers, it's twice as fast, you can pull the thing twice as fast, um, and you can't cut with it. But it grooms it, um, I've heard nobody that owns them have a, a bad thing to say about them and for some reason I can't. We can't get the road department to use this one, so, um, that's. So that's, I like to see that groomer get out there and maybe even if it does work like they say it does, you know.
Cause that would groom like the washouts and stuff too, right? Yeah, just like it was good when we backtracked, because we had a washout, like it just, it doesn't tear it up, but it just moves it out and. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, we should learn from other counties, you know, try to figure out which counties have the best roads, try to call them. Maybe they can come down and do some trainings, do some best practices too.
Yeah, I got, I got a. For my work, so I got a ditch prop event county and I call over there and, uh, we're working on that with them guys and I had some questions. For them, why they got two ridges on their rock, why, what's their reasoning, how, you know, how's this working, because I heard it works really well over there, you know, they got two ranges that they blend back and forth. So I'm working on a little bit of that behind the scenes too, so.
We've also, I mean, to get compared to that, to Benton County's hard for us too, because they have like. Five or six quarries in the county and, and we have zero, one. I knew you could, you know, we have one on the very, 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 very east or west side of the county, so they do, they, Benton County always has. Awesome amount of rock out there. They have good rock out there too, um, and my point too, and I can't get anybody to do it either, I don't know why we have a ridge in the summertime. I think that rock should be out there, um, when I was a kid, it always was, and there's always three lanes down the road where the tire tracks were. So it just disgusts me when I see ridges in the, in the middle of summertime, um, they do it obviously in the wintertime to save rock. But in the summertime, I still feel it needs to stay out in the middle.
Well, that would help a lot of the drains too, you know, grow like that, there's, there are some of those flatter spots.
Again, I know we're their boss, but I think.
Yeah, I think we need to have a, a, figure this out.
That was the, I guess that was the end of Monday.
Good discussion, I mean, we have, uh. When people don't feel like they're heard, they get frustrated and again, I want them to feel heard. One thing that isn't probably noted or that maybe isn't known, uh, as a public information is that. We supervise the, or we evaluate contract with the county engineer for the roads. And then he, his contract says that, or excuse me, their contract says that they're, he's over the road guys, uh, and so. Kind of structurally, the way that it looks, we're also charged through the code, through Iowa code, we're appointed to make sure that our roads are good. And so we have kind of a joint, uh, effort with the county engineer, so it's in our best interest to make sure he's, um. Getting his guys to do what they need to do, but we have no direct control or pressure point with the actual. And potentially the reportment in, in those that are not under the union contract, right? So, uh, that's kind of frustrating, a lot of people are trying to get a, get answers and. And we want to be responsive, but also work within the structure, that we're given under the code and. And go that way, and so we need to probably have some kind of a discussion with Ben at some point in the upcoming near future and. We hear you, we hear the voices of the public, uh, we see it on Facebook before putting plenty of videos and pictures and. I drive it myself, uh, lots of miles of, of gravel every day. We hear you and we're going to address that, uh, the best way that we know how. And, uh, it won't get better overnight, but I think that, uh, it's something that we can do at least. You know, and I can stand by that, I don't know the roads as well, but I do know how to fix problems, but I, you know, like listening to what people's issues are. And, uh, this is a very competent board to be able to address those, and so we really need to start tackling that issue, I think. As quickly as we can, and so we need to schedule a meeting, I think, can we get something on the calendar? But, uh, we would just do it. Get a little Ben, see if I can. Find out the time, is everybody like here the rest of this week?
I'm not here tomorrow.
Yep, next week's up in the air for me and so, puts something out in a couple of weeks, puts something out in a couple of weeks. And, uh, we'll, we'll go from there, good? We're headed to one one eight two two six point six nine, I took David's job, I need to make the motion.
I'll make motion that we approve the claims and the amount that Mark said, one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, two hundred and twenty-six. All right, sorry, let's just write this down, one one eight comma, two two six period six nine, I make motion to approve them.
And the second is there any discussion on any of them, I think they're all pretty much in line.
There was one I had, actually both Kurt and I had. There was one I had, actually both Kurt and I had, what were the promotional items that are under us, the board supervisors? For two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents.
What's the vendor?
Uh, Four Imprint Inc.
Um, that would have been for public health through their archivists. It would be like nest supplies and things like that.
Any other? Discussion looked like most of Ben's, was the biggest and it was mostly rock. So we want that. All those papers, yeah?
I
Poop, question curious.
Uh, any other public comments? Good.
Okay, I'll start. Um, I would like to ask, uh, what your for the IT, that, that's just going to be an ongoing change thing, but wh- what is your end goal for that, that, um, the IT services, the IT directive, the IT stuff that's going on right now, and it's going to be constantly changing. So what is the end goal for the IT, um, segment of county funds?
We had a team come in in February. They pointed out a lot of deficiencies. We want those fixed. Uh, that involves changing a bunch of equipment. Um, the goal is to get the equipments, the, the correct equipment in place. With the idea that we don't just put a Band-Aid on what we have, cause that's what's been happening. And now we have a major upgrade that we need to do. And so the goal is to do that smartly at a low cost. But also provide for ongoing updates where we would not have to replace equipment.
Thank you. Um, roads, uh, for next, next sentence right here. So Tama County, especially maybe from Trera on down through this area and catching some rainfall and our progress up past, uh, the river. We've had, we've been blessed with horrible, horrible, just horrible weather events, horrible weather events for, well, well, since about two thousand and eleven, but especially since two thousand and twenty. So there's been other people in here that have been commenting on the weeds. And I certainly have commented on our previous engineer. So with ongoing weather, there seems to hit through this area for whatever reason. And a lot of this stuff is going on. Um, it's going to take a long time to get it repaired and fixed because the last engineer was not very approachable. Now, that's just not coming from me. That's coming from listening a lot in the last four years and including to county employees. He was just not enough. And he was kind of an absentee guy. I mean, if you wanted him, you didn't know where he was going to be, then maybe not in this county. Cause he was working two counties and he seemed to be in three counties. So a lot of these problems are being dumped on you guys when it's wetting, cold and lagging. The nation was through this and the graves that were extremely important people. But I don't think you have to fix it all at once. And I, I kind of wondered, I mean, when I'm driving out there, I kind of want the other farmers that have been in here. The weed, the, the weeds are horrible. They're just awful. I mean, oh my gosh, they're from the right below the edge of the road, clear up into the fence lines. And we're not going to be able to get that all solved in one row, in one year. And I think our weed commissioner needs to realize that this is going to be an ongoing thing. And I, um, then we have bigger, heavier, heavier, every year heavier equipment. And we're going to also be dealing with the heavier equipment coming in with turbines. My goodness. So that's going to take its toll eventually. I mean, usually you don't see a problem, by the way. Usually it's a few years down the road, months down the road, after everybody goes home, down the road. So this thing is not going to go away. It's taking more because the unbelievable. So I also wondered if maybe just human nature and more people, different people, other, other generations than, than mine. I wondered if people were also complaining more. I mean, I don't remember where we used to call it every time we'd get a gully washer rain and bellyache to the county about roads being washed. We dealt with it because we knew, but that's what you expect. I mean, so, so are people complaining more also to all of you guys, especially if they just like you out on the road? Like, hey, Mark, we need to talk to you about these roads, but it seems like people might even just be quiet, you know? Just give them some time, you guys. There's a lot of problems. Just give it some time. So that was my comments and questions on common sense for roads. I mean, I don't know, maybe you have to be old to have common sense. I don't know. Maybe you have to. Um, so these are questions for somebody else. What, how are you covering this? How are you going to deal with farmers in the future so they don't come back and sue Tama County for problems in phase one, hopefully not phase two, with their turbine stuff? Because it's not going to be the beautiful picture that they think it's going to be. So, so the guy wants to know how you supervise them, they're going to prevent farmers coming back and suing. It's unbelievable. Suing Tama County Board of Supervisors for the problems that they are going to be in.
What's that person look like?
He looks like a farmer. He is a farmer. He's not, yeah, he's a farmer.
We would need more specifics. We would need more specifics.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, he's, no, he's not trying to get turbine. These are our protect county for being sued by turbine owners.
Well, they signed a contract.
That will protect them? No, that will protect the county so that they can't, so we can't be sued in the future?
If they have a wind turbine, they signed a contract with the wind turbine company?
Who will go home? Won't be here anymore. And so they might have a problem of a, of a mul-, of a multitude of problems, because we've already uncovered most of the stuff that can happen with these. I'm not talking solar or nuclear or battery storage. We're simply talking turbines right now. And he wants to know how the county will be protected into the future from lawsuits from the farmers that have this stuff. Well, I don't know, maybe you don't have the answer and I'm just throwing it out there.
Give you the answer. They have a contract that they signed. Anything in the contract is going to be what they, how they would litigate that. It wouldn't go towards the county, it would go towards the
I think he listens to one of our meetings. Thank you. Then another question he had was, um, dealing with, uh, and I know we've covered this a little bit before, the property taxes, if we can do something to increase the property taxes for that land where the turbines are, because it should not be ag, it should not be residential, it should be industrial. That's question number two.
Restate the question.
Um, property taxes on the land where the turbines are because of the increased value of that working turbine. Can that be, I think you have said that that comes down from the state. We've only just got so many, then we got a lot of limitations with that.
Yeah, it's, they're, so it's taxed, and if you want to, um, but it's based on the
At the time it's built, so like what it costs to build the whole project and it's split out by turbine. But that's on the actual turbines. We get a separate tax on that from the wind company. What you're referring to is the fault what the farmer pays. They signed up their whole parcel, but they only pay, but they don't pay anything industrial. They stay their same rate they've always been, even though there's transmission lines and they signed up the whole thing. So I'm assuming that's what you're meaning is that they should pay industrial for and not just the turbine that the wind company pays at the farmer.
Because we're not really corn plot anymore or soybean.
Well, they, each of the, each of the areas, if there's sixty turbines, you're going to have sixty half acre swath, right? Instead of a half acre. You're taking thirty acres out of production out of the, the grand total of all, all of what's every footprint, but a lot of this.
So will it, how, will every taxes paid on that, on that half acre? By the farmer or by the company or by what?
From the wind company.
Property taxes will be paid by the wind company?
Yeah, for the, like, what's actually got the turbine on.
At the rate of ag land or, or what?
So it's thirty percent of the assessed value at year seven, and it starts out at zero. And then incrementally, incrementally goes up every year, five percent until you reach sixty, or thirty percent at year seven.
Yeah, it's four twenty-seven B point two six, special valuation of wind turbines. I know we got Dave here, but I, it needs to be more than that. It's zero percent first year, goes up to thirty percent. I've talked to Dean about that. It should be a lot more. Definitely we should be getting for property taxes off the turbines, because it comes from the wind company, not from the farmer. But they go we looked into that and it sounds like it's a very gray area. If you don't have that four twenty-seven B point two six special valuation, it's very gray to where you don't know what it's going to look like. So it'll be less, it could be more. It's more on their output that they generate that comes from them and this is what we're outputting. So they're not a good solution.
Put factor in too, they've made agreements and they've done things based on what the law said at the time. So you got a grandfather issue, you've also got legal issues if you're going to change some things. So the lawyers will make the money.
Rock and hard place, yeah.
And I'm not throwing lawyers under the bus. They, they went to school and did a good job. They passed the bar. They can charge what they want, depends on what we want to pay.
I know, I know the gene, but it was a good question and I wanted to bring it up, so. I would appreciate if Mr. Sires had anything more to say on that. That would be amazing and awesome, because this is the right time and he's here, so. Is there any new information on the value of property, residential properties setting in close proximity to, um, these energy fields? Is there any new information coming from anybody on that?
I didn't know there was a question about that.
You mean the, the risk of property values going down? I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't think about, yeah.
Once they go up or you'd have to look at other counties probably, just feels bad, yeah.
It isn't. Right now, we need to listen. Thank you. I do have a rule. The money that's going to be coming from Salt Creek and Creek, you said that going to go to the general fund, where will that go? Where is our general fund at? Kind of sleepy, but I'd say after it's just split out to ours.
Yeah, that's the transfer will take care of that.
You look like you're going to still say something else, so I didn't want to cut you off, but.
No.
Do you have anything else?
I think I've got enough. Thank you.
Get anything?
Comment on the roads. You're saying about the roads are hard. That's where most people grow. You get off the center road, that's where it's off. That's where it's going to settle. Water tends to go downhill. That's where your water is going to be. Also, the soil in Tama County is not the best. You got a lot of sand roads. The rock gets ate up, ate up from the same spots every time it rains. That's what your problems are. But you can't control the soil. You just have to deal with it. Years ago, there used to be two uh, more motor grinders on the road that got cut. And the area the motor grader runs now is a lot broader. They can't get to every area at a decent time. But also you need to have that got cut. So when you cut, you pay the price on your rock. Didn't we approve to set it up freely?
We, we did approve, but it hasn't been done yet.
And I thought you were going to hire another guy. I thought that was in there too.
I think when the budget cuts came out, something was said there too, that might go somewhere different for hours or something, but um, yeah. Gerald's very experienced. He's been with the blade man for a county, so.
Yeah, I mean, he can read her gas about ninety miles around.
We got five, right?
No, we got
Yeah, we have, uh,
We got five.
We have six on it. Three on each side. You got Dizer, you got Trere, you got two, Chelsea. Chelsea, Denizdale.
There's ten.
We have ten. You got Garwin.
Glever?
Glever, two, or one in Glever, one in Glever, one in Montour. So eight, eight. Two in Tama, so we have ten.
Do we have somebody to sit, make one of them?
Yes, yeah.
We, I'll do one right now, I believe.
Yeah.
But like Gerald said, two more would that used to be, and that was the old engineer, that was another board, two boards ago that okayed that stuff. Um, he happened to came, come up from Benton County and they, again, have more access to rock and they can do stuff with less people. And he wanted, was trying to get our workforce down to what they were. Um, yeah, so that happened.
Yeah, we need to have the all our own rock as much as possible. That saves money. I mean, you got to pay for the rock, but we're already paying for the employee. So, yeah, we, we need to have that discussion sooner rather than later. Well, I, well, I don't, I don't have a different, uh, appro-, approach to that. Your contract rock, just for a second, our money, the money, the rock is out there. You're not paying for fuel, you're not paying, uh, for your insurance on that employee doing. That's his idea, getting the rock cheaper.
That's, that's true. And when we first came on, we had evaluated what our equipment was. We still have a, I have a list of everything we have, but we were having people, we have dump trucks with, uh, the pups. You can haul more rock in and belly dump. Or a side dump, but we had asked him to look into doing some we're going to buy another one, asked him to buy another one, so that we could haul our own in the long term. Um, I know the contracting rock seems to be a better deal, but I think if you have guys that, you know, uh, need something to do someday because of rain or whatever it is, uh, they could be hauling or stockpiling rock. Um, whereas more accessible is not in, uh, Benton County, but, uh, we could stockpile some at our shops. And so that was the idea behind it. We still did contract for a hundred thousand dollars worth of rock this year. We were contracting for two hundred thousand when we first came on, but we were asking to shift to this new, new model. But, uh, that hasn't evidently been done yet, so.
I think it was half and half. I think you did half and half this year, half contract, half not, yeah.
The, uh, contract rock. Again, this opinion, but, uh, we've been there, I was there for twenty-five years. Um, and I think something, I mean, they can do it in this early spring, because they get busy with their trucks doing stuff, you know, later. They continue to haul right through rainy days. Um, and you get that rock in one, you know, set up six mile stretch or five mile stretch, and they just pound the hell out of that. You know, it, it, it's useless. I mean, and I think maybe even our truck should stay off the roads during the rain, you know, we still, they still haul. I mean, cause you just go over it and you just smash it, it just, it's, it just, um, but one big downfall, they just, and they, you can't blame them, because they're trying to get that done. They're, they're, they're contract haulers. Um, but it's just, it's mind boggling that they can, they just go and just tear that new rock up, you know, and, um, another thing we've done with Um, another thing we've done with a couple of old foremans, uh, recent foremans, they went to having everybody haul in the county on one project like a contract. But to me, that makes sense, because they even. Sometimes the projects down by Montour, where you got, and District One's getting. Neglected, you know, and then neglected and, and then, you know, all the other ones. I, I mean, I still think they need to keep their trucks in their own areas and, and get done with that truck and do, um. It all, it's all great up front. It looks like something's getting done in that five mile stretch. Sure, it is, and it is. But also things aren't getting done where those other trucks should be. Um, that was a, that was a idea came up. Foreman, set up foremans ago and. To me, that doesn't make much sense, but that's again, we can talk about that.
Everybody else?
Yeah, I'm just sort of the pot, that's what I do. So, uh, when we started getting all this money in, um, we needed to keep really good track of it. Uh, because it sounded to me a few minutes ago, like one person was going to be in charge of following.
One person in charge of the block?
Probably the.
It's going to general fund.
And then we approve budgets, so we would be in charge of.
And deposits. Keep track, something about. Problem that has been going on in this county that we did not know about or caught. And you guys have been really good at making everybody mad. I used to go stop now, watching stuff. Need to be friends with everybody. Anyway, we can't be friends with South Tama and North Tama both. Up there with Davis, you know, everybody loves them, but down here, nobody loves anybody.
It's like a civil war you're trying to kick off.
We've been in the midst of one for quite a long time now, so. I was going to be over there and, uh, can have a long, be trying to make things better.
Dave, you have anything good you want to say?
No, I think, uh. Well, I'll tell you what, here's one thing in the mold of business that I've learned. I never take complaints from people who aren't complaining for themselves. That's, that's one rule that I don't. Don't ever have, because then you look like you're the complainer on everything. So. That's the only thing I have to say. And I'm glad to come here to your meetings. I'm working on the stuff with Pam and we're going to see what's going to happen.
Yep. Alright.
That's why I'm here, see what you guys got going on.
That's it.
I have run the road grader for many, many years in my construction business. And what they're talking about, the edge of the road. And when the grader operator doing everybody really complains, but they have that list, it's got. A lot of the road gets kind of muddy. And so it is nice to reach out, cut that off, throw it in the ditch. And let that crown of that road go all the way to the ditch. But you, you, you've got some experienced operators, those got ears on, be a solid one. And you just need to bring your young guys out of there.
I don't like rocks in the ditch. Cause that's money.
I understand you're going to put some money that you'll bring up and then everybody complain about that.
Yep.
There's a fine line there when you're working that edge.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yep, it's good with the ditch. Alright, I think we've hit everything. We will be adjourned at ten, in three.